Good morning and welcome to the June 22nd City Council meeting. We're glad you're here. We're gonna begin with the invocation from Councilman Wynn, followed by the pledge. If you'll please stand with him.
Let us pray. God, you send rain in season. It is a season of need in Texas. Send more rain to that parched land and more again across all the thirsty southern states. Find a small unwilling cloud sitting bored over some vacant part of the Caribbean and give it a push towards Houston. Make a hurricane, perhaps not strong enough to destroy, but filled with warm moisture and send it north. We ask you for rain. Let the drought unite many millions and ask for your help. We trust in you. You made the world to need the waters of heaven. You made the world to need the waters of life. You are the source of rain. We ask you, let it rain. In Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will begin with the minutes from May 25th, 2022.
Move to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, we're gonna come down for A1 and A2. Let's go. The first thing we're going to do is read a proclamation for three of our speakers. All right, three Charles. And before I read it, I do want to say, Charles, you've been around how many years?
Tyler, fifteen.
Encore, how many?
Pretty nine and a half.
You know, Charles has always been the coaching guy. And whenever there's a winter event or we leave our electricity, what do we do? We call Charles. Whether it's 11:00 PM or 2:00 AM, he always answers the phone. And then I always apologize to Charles and I say, I'm sorry, I called just late. And his response is always, when people quit calling me, I love the job. And so even last year when they went storm here, I mean, you were there on the spot from day one and helped us through a crisis with no deaths. And I commend you for all your help with the city. And I know everybody up here feels the same way. And you know, the Encore trucks out there with the flag hanging is not just something that we take by, it's something that we honor you for that. And we appreciate your service. Now-
These are the guys.
Okay, those are the guys. Thank you as well. We can't thank you enough. And one thing we didn't get from you is the guy that's gonna fill your shoes, that's gonna be what we need. What's that? Down there? There is one requirement. Charles has already said, you're a real Phil. That's sitting there all yourself.
Absolutely.
Now for the proclamation. Whereas Encore Electric was established in 1912 as Texas Power and Life Company, whereas has continuously operated for 110 years providing a reliable electric service fueling the economic growth of Tyler and Smith County. Whereas Encore Electric Delivery has approximately 175 employees and contractors dating providing service in Smith County. Whereas Encore Electric Delivery has provided community leadership through economic development, Chamber of Commerce, United Way, and various community nonprofits and service organizations throughout its history. Now therefore, I, Donald Warren, Mayor of the City of Tyler, Texas, do hereby proclaim June 22nd, 2022, is Encore Electric Delivery Day, encouraging all citizens to support this endeavor not only for this day but throughout the year. Okay, one, one of all you guys. Yeah, I'll play along. Come on, guys. Come on. Don't be shy. Picture time.
I appreciate you, friends. Yuck in the clear. Don't be shy.
Yeah, they blocked the sun. Appreciate y'all.
Like Kevin, you ain't near tall enough.
Come on in.
Let's get me, you get in the front.
Okay.
Put the handle in the back.
Don't get it back. Thank y'all again.
Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. Appreciate you. Charles. Bring it in. All right. We don't have a video, Brett. The first one is John Carden, police officer, 20 years of service. John, are you there? There you are. Got picture time. Thank you. Next, we have Todd Lane, fire driver engineer, 20 years of service. Well, don't see any, but we'll give him a hand anyway. James Turner, police officer, 20 years of service.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have Jeffrey Barnett, fire senior captain, 25 years of service. Evidently, they're out protecting our city. Juan Flores, equipment operator, 30 years of service. And when you think about 115 years, that's a long time. And you guys are what the young people look up to. And y'all are the mentees or the mentors that teach the young people how to be loyal, how to have that call to serve spirit. So for all of you guys that received this recognition today, just thank you for your service to the city. We appreciate you. All right, P1, Stephanie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This morning, Innovation Pipeline is here to make a presentation. We talked about what's been going on for about a year now in Innovation Pipeline. We support Innovation Pipeline with an annual contribution. So we have one more year coming up on that. And James Harden, the executive director, is here. Also, Jason Wright, who's our new chairman of the board, is here as well. So I'm gonna ask them to come up. And they have a video that they wanted to show you this morning and just give you a few comments.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. I want to go ahead and apologize. The video was slightly longer than I intended, but here it goes.
Like hell, well. No kidding, no kidding. Like, should I have brought lunch?
So I lead a creative collective in Tyler. And part of my heart with that is to, I value being generative and sowing into other creators so that they rise and they create and they develop. And in leading that group, I had always had an inner vision or dream of having a space that was almost like a house that had different rooms.
Just back it up, James, if I need a break.
To, I value being generative. And part of my heart with that is to, I value being generative and sowing into other creators so that they rise and they create and they develop. And in leading that group, I had always had an inner vision or dream of having a space that was almost like a house that had different rooms for different talents and different gifting. So an audio-
Checking on it, okay.
I took my hearing aid back. I should have kept it.
Forgive me for the length and the lack of sound as well. I will. Absolutely. My name is James Harden. I am the executive director of the Tyler Innovation Pipeline. This video is basically two to three stories testimonials of people who we've impacted their lives just through being here and through our mission of providing and equipping entrepreneurs, innovators, and ideas with the resources and the networks necessary to bring their ideas to life. And we are actively functioning in what we were created and intended to be. And we couldn't be here without the support of the city. So myself, as a member and as the director, I am highly thankful and grateful for all your support over the years and this year as well. It really is making a difference in people's lives, so. Yeah, we can try it again.
Tyler. And part of my heart with that is to, I value being generative and sowing into other creators so that they rise and they create and they develop. And in leading that group, I had always had an inner vision or dream of having a space that was almost like a house that had different rooms for different talents and different gifting. So an audio room, a video room, a recording room. I could see a space where coffee was made and people could be on sofas and just do life together and just be together. But also really imagine in the collaboration and the synergy of using gifts together to really birth and build things that would make our city great and beautiful and inspiring and hopeful. And in the midst of leading that, after completing a project, got wind that the Tyler Innovation Pipeline existed. And so when I first walked in the doors of the pipeline, I saw already established and created the vision that I'd always had of a creative house, a creative space that allowed people to imagine and to dream. I just felt like a kid in a playground. And I was very excited for the hope and the possibility that the city had already decided that creativity is important and it was valued enough to be built and to be established and that we just get to partake as a community. So I've always been very excited about the Tyler Innovation Pipeline.
I'm a family and kid show performer. For 25 years, I was in full-time local church ministry. Have my master's degree from Abilene Christian University. First time I walked into the Innovation Pipeline, I'd heard about it just kind of around places. And I'd heard, hey, there's this place somewhere downtown. I don't know about it, but you don't believe this, but you can do 3D printing and you can do stuff. And I thought, well, that's, that is cool, but you know, for fun, I got a lot of other things going on. And then I decided, you know what, COVID hit, and in one day, all of my gigs for the entire year canceled in one three-hour period. But it was a punch to the gut to get call after call. As soon as I would hang up another festival, they'd call and say, well, we've decided to cancel. And just my entire income for the year just evaporated. So what I started doing was some online teaching of other performers. And that kind of blossomed. I was doing courses. I enjoyed doing that. I had done that at conventions and that kind of thing. So I went to online. And so what I thought is, I want to do a membership site where I could help people, direct teaching, Zoom calls, Q and A type stuff. And so I had looked at some shared office spaces and that kind of thing. And a lot of that had shut down because of COVID. And there just weren't options that I knew about. And so I heard about the Innovation Pipeline. I came in and got the tour. And then I looked around and there was all the things I'd heard about, the 3D printing, the laser engraving and all of that. These days, you just, it's almost impossible to keep up with what's going financially because things change so quick. But what the Innovation Pipeline is constantly upgrading and improving.
So I have used the Tyler Innovation Pipeline personally and creatively. I'm a writer. I like to use written communication to connect people to the heart of a thing, to inspire people. But as a leader of the creative collective, it's also been for me a really safe space to bring our crew. We were blessed to be able to make a movie out of this place. And then personally, I've also used the Mac computers to learn some Adobe and other software so that I can launch some written media ideas that I have for the future, for the city, and for things I want to create. So the pipeline for me provides equipping, the resources I maybe haven't had, that enable me and my crew to fully flourish and let our dreams take flight. To me, for a city to be healthy and to flourish, creativity and innovation must be a part of that identity. So to have Tyler already have resources in place and saying, hey, we value innovation and creativity, that's the mark of a really healthy city. And so for me, I invest in my membership here, not just for myself, but to invest in that heartbeat for my town.
The pipeline has definitely been the constant through it all. And it's provided me connections. It's provided me learning about how to do things I didn't know how to do. And then it provided me a way to get something patented to eventually sell it. Creators, innovators, entrepreneurs, makers, all those people have something or somewhere to get involved here at the pipeline.
You know, folks need to know about this and the value. So what I tell other people is, if you are thinking about doing something in the creative space, you need to join right away. It's not overstating it to say, without the Innovation Pipeline, I couldn't be doing what I'm doing in the online education field.
I couldn't be more excited about the pipeline. I couldn't be more excited about being a part of anything they're doing. Creativity and innovation are so essential to help all the way around in our city and in our society. So I'm a great champion of the pipeline and all that it holds for its great potential.
Once more, I apologize for the length of the video and the audio, but those are two examples of stories. And we have many more, many other people who have similar stories. If we weren't there, I'm not sure where they would be, you know, with their idea or their business. So, thank you.
Good job. Before you sit down, Jason, do you want to say anything?
I just want to say thank you so much to the council. I know that all of you were passed with stewardry, with taxpayer dollars, and then also prioritizing that. And the fact that you made Innovation Pipeline a priority, we're truly grateful. And I would ask that if you ever, there's two things I would ask you. If you ever wonder what's going on in the pipeline, please call me or James or any of the other board members to come down and find out, see what's going on. And the second thing, and probably more importantly, and this is for you guys, any of you out there and anyone that might be watching, if you have a business that you would like to start, if you have your big idea, or if you just wonder where you can go to create, please consider the Tyler Innovation Pipeline. We would love to have you. We would love to walk alongside you and help your dream and your vision become a reality so that people create cool innovative things right here in Tyler, Texas. So council, thank y'all very, very much. Thank you.
You bet. And let me make one comment. One of the guys in the video, Nathan LaMester-
Yeah.
Created using the 3D printer, the Pill Popper.
That's right.
And when I saw this in the very beginning, I was really impressed with the creativity. And Nathan now has it patented. And I was so intrigued by what he's done that another gentleman and I met with Nathan. And we've agreed to help him finance it through the first stage.
Fantastic.
And I think this is an example of, is it gonna be the next main thing, the big million-dollar, you know, shark tank thing? Probably not. Maybe not, maybe so. But it gives these guys the ability to create. And for anybody in the community that has an interest to reach out and say, I like your product and I want to back you. So to me, this is very exciting. So thank you.
Well, Mayor, you bring up an incredible point. So we all know the story of Wise and Steve Jobs and what they created in a garage. This is way cooler than anybody's garage, I assure you. So if they can create that, imagine if we can give East Texans a facility like this to come and dream and create just like Nathan LaMester has. So I hope that his story and the Pill Popper is just one of many that comes out of the Tyler Innovation Pipeline. So thank y'all so much.
You bet. Thank you. All right, on to zoning items. Z1, Kyle.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. This first item is a zone change request from RMF Multi-Family Residential District to R1D Single Family Residential Attached and Detached. This is on North Liberty Avenue, just north of here. The applicant is requesting the change to develop a single-family home on the property. They have previously rezoned some of the properties to the north, R1D as well. And this is consistent with the area as well as the Future Land Use Guide for the general area. Of the notices that were sent out, is there a return in favor or in opposition? And the plan to commission by a four to zero vote, recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z1.
Motion by McGee, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z2.
This is a zone change request from C1 Light Commercial District to PMXD1 Plan Mixed Use District. This is to allow for the development of multi-family residential units on the property. The applicant intends to develop 45 residential units at this location. This is just, or this is near the Fresh Grocery Store. And so this is to allow, again, four residential units on that corner. The surrounding properties are generally developed with commercial uses. To the south is also a mixed-use zoning with a mixture of residential and commercial use. This request is consistent with the Future Land Use Guide, identifying the property as Mixed Use Center. As you can see here, the applicant plans to develop this corner with the buildings you see on the site plan. Again, it's 45 units. And there will be parking on both the west side, along Highlands, as well as internally within the shopping center there. The, of the notices that were sent out, we did receive one in opposition and one in favor. The opposition was generally concerned with maybe the height of the buildings, blocking the view of their properties. As you can see on the site plan, while they are four-story tall buildings, or four-story buildings, they are situated away from the intersection, not close to the neighbor's property across the road. And so that's kind of one of the benefits of the site plan is that you can see exactly where the buildings are going to be. And so that was the main concern that they had. As well as, one thing to note is that the current zoning will allow for a 42-foot tall building as well. So, but it wouldn't stipulate where that could be. So the plan to commission reviewed the request and recommended approval by a four to zero vote.
Any questions for Kyle? Motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. C3. Mark Prester was here to answer questions. I guess since it got approved, you don't have any questions? Or any? Do you want to come up? Okay. Thank you. I don't have another one. Do you have another one, Cassandra? Can hear. Go ahead.
This next request is a zone change from C1 Light Commercial to R1D Single Family, and Single Family Attached. This is to bring the existing single-family home into coformance with the Unified Development Code. It's, most of those properties along North Grand are developed with single-family homes. The Future Land Use Guide is Mixed Use Center. This would amend it to Single Family, Single Family Attached. At this time, as you can see, many of these properties are still single-family homes. And so this is consistent with that. The notices that were sent out, one was returned in favor, none in opposition. And the plan to commission by a four to zero vote, recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle? Got a motion by McKeller, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z4.
This is a zone change request from C2 General Commercial District to R2 Two Family Residential. The applicant plans to convert the existing building into a duplex inside the corner of North Broadway and MLK Junior Boulevard. The surrounding properties are generally developed with single-family homes. There are some vacant properties. And then a church to the west. The request would amend the Future Land Use Guide to reflect Single Family, Single Family Attached. At this time, as you can see, that there's still generally some residential uses in that area. And so the applicant-
there's still generally some residential uses in that area. And so the applicant's converting this structure into, into a duplex. I believe it, it's, it looks like it used to be used for the church or for some, some other similar activity. And of the notices that were sent out, is there a return in favor or in opposition? And the plan to commission by a four-zero vote, recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle? Got a motion by McKeller, second by Westbrook. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. So Z5 and Z6, are we, you going to discuss these separately?
I can present them together, then we can.
We'll vote separate, but present together?
Yeah, the, the next two items are in close proximity to each other, and so we'll present them together. The, the first one, the Z5, is a request from M2 to R1D on Old Lake Water Highway. This is to, or the property is currently developed with two existing family, or single-family homes. The applicant's requesting to rezone the property to Single Family to allow it, for the property to be subdivided, to break, break out both homes onto separate properties. The, as you can see, it's currently Zon M2. And this is, one thing to note is, this is also council district number three. The, again, so you can, I'll just go to the, so the future land use guide identifies it as a single-family medium-low density. The, so these are the, you can see the lots there that look like at one point they were going to be developed with a single-family subdivision. The M2 zoning allows for, at that time, it was allowed for, you know, single-family homes to be built. Now it does not. And so these are considered to be legal non-conforming, single-family uses, which, which they are allowed to continue as such unless there's any, you know, the, the, if the homes are demolished or, or destroyed, I guess, that they cannot be rebuilt with, within M2. But the use, as it is currently used, could continue as, as a single-family home or single-family homes under that legal non-conforming status. You can, you can kind of see, so to the east is the location of a industrial plant there and associated, associated storage areas and parking areas. You can kind of see off to the east. Those are, most of the properties, I'll go back, most of those lots there surrounding that are actually owned by that industrial user. And they do have plans to expand or utilize that site for future, future operations. And so we did receive opposition from the property owner to the east or surrounding there. You can see it's sixty, over 61% protest calculation, which would require a three-quarters majority of city council to approve the item. So six out of seven would need to vote in favor to approve this request. The, the main concern with, with the change or the proposed zone change is that the applicant, or the neighbor has indicated that they, they still plan to utilize that area for industrial activity. It's not something that has, you know, gone away and therefore now suitable to make it, keep it residential or expand the, the non-conforming residential uses in that area. So that's generally the, the concern is that it may not be, based off the plans for the, the industrial, industrial user, that the site may not be suitable for residential. So yeah, I'll go to the next item here. It's a little bit different. So this is across the road. A zone change from RMH, which is manufactured housing residential, to, to R1A. It's currently a vacant property and the applicant plans to construct a, a single-family home on the property. And you can see the property here is currently undeveloped. It was, it was previously, was previously a manufactured home on the property. It looks like it's been moved. And the protest calculation on this one, again, exceeds the 20%, is 44.95%. Again, the same, and the same neighbor has voiced their, their opposition or their, their concern with the, the request. Again, largely because they, they do own the properties around it and they do plan to use those for industrial activity. And so their concern is that, and they are here as well. Their concern is that it may not be suitable for new residential use. So with both of these items, the, the plan to commission did recommend approval of both Z5 and Z6 by a four-zero vote.
What was the recommendation, recommendation from P&amp;Z to, or from staff to P&amp;Z on this?
Staff, staff did not recommend approval of the, of these items, again, because in this case, you know, we do have, sometimes there are cases where you have, you know, older industrial zoning that is no longer, you know, active or, or was never really actually used for industrial. And so those times are where you, you might see, you know, allowing those single-family homes to, or new development to occur. Whenever there is, you know, we, we, there is knowledge of, you know, future expansions or, you know, that, that, that the industrial activity is not, you know, concluded or expired or whatever, that is generally not recommended to, you know, place single-family homes in that kind of activity or that environment. So that's why staff did recommend denial.
Any questions for Kyle before we move on to our speakers?
Just a clarification. P&amp;Z did unanimously approve this.
Yes, sir.
So I'll go, the zoning part is in REIT. What is it, what is it zoned at right now?
Those are M2, General Industrial.
So they're all REIT industry?
Yes.
How many acres are owned by the family?
By the who? I'm sorry. Yeah, they, and they are here, but I believe they own this property, the one to the south.
Which item are you speaking about right now?
Pardon me?
Which item are you speaking about right now? Was it Z5 or Z6?
Well, I'm talking about both. So they. They are. Same family.
I'm just trying to separate the items for minutes.
So Z5, how many acres do they own? And then Z6, how many acres?
How many acres?
The lot question is 0.27 acres. Do they own beyond that?
No, that's, that's the extent there. So yes, so on Z5, that's the, that's the extent of the property there. It's 0.26 acres. And then, and then, and then all this, this one here, this is 1.24 acres.
Did you say 2.6, 2.6 or 26?
Point, point 2.6. And I believe they do also own the property. Where the cursor is.
Kyle, the Z5, their homes there, and you said, then they can remain there as they are?
Yes, sir. So yeah, the.
And then Z6, there is no structure on that lot?
Right. So the, the existing use can't continue as legal non-conformant status or grandfather status on this property. The zoning wouldn't restrict any expansion of that non-conformant use. And then also if the, if that expired after six months, you know, and there was no residential activity for more than six months, then it would expire as well. So. And then on the, on Z6, the other property is currently undeveloped, so there's, there's no non-conformant use. You're rowing your eyes.
This is the area of plant, right? Area? Which one of these properties is right across the street from where the entrance of the K-R-A plant was? Or is it, I'm trying to get. Across from the parking lot.
So the parking lot, yeah, it's just to the east. It's across from that.
As a medical person who was interested and concerned about people living in industrial areas.
Yes.
I think there's an issue going on right now in Texas, in Tyler, about people that live in that area who experience a lot of medical issues.
Any other questions or comments for Kyle before we proceed? Okay. First up, we've got Cornelio Flores. Good morning. If you can just state your name and address for the record.
My name is Cornelio Flores. I own the, own the property, 2317 Old Lake Water Highway. What I can tell you is my, my dad gave us, each piece of property, there's three of us, there's three sons. As you can see in the picture, there's two houses on that lot. Between the two lots, it's about a half an acre. We've been there for all our lives. He lives across the street, that's the other property. And my brother purchased the property right next to it to, you know, stay together as a family. Now, my brother is currently living in that house with my uncle, which is elderly. His house is the one right next to mine. The, the two houses are right next to each other. And we have another uncle that lives in that house. So the whole reason for the rezoning was because as my dad came here to try to give us better opportunities, he purchased these homes over 40 years ago. He gave it to us with the intention to put us in a better situation, to better ourselves, to, you know, get ahead in life. Buying a home was very hard. So especially in today's day and age. So it was a great help. I lived there for 10 years. I just recently purchased another home, but I take a lot of pride in that house. And my dad gave it to me for 10 years into it, trying to fix it, make it nice, make it livable. The reason for the rezoning is because my dad is getting older, things get harder. We just had our mom pass away a year ago, and we're still having to kind of sort some of that stuff. We're just planning ahead, trying to make sure that if something does happen to my father, what he wanted us to accomplish or what he wanted to accomplish is set. So he doesn't have to worry about those kind of things anymore. The whole reason for the rezoning is because currently, they're both zoned under one area. I was trying to divide it so my brother could go ahead and have his part, I could have my part, and then that's one less thing that my dad would have to worry about. That's the whole reason I even started this venture. I never thought that it would come to all this. Carrier's been there for a long time. Carrier left. And if you look at parking lot there, has never been developed. It's a very swampy area. I've always had trouble keeping the swamp coming over. So I mean, I'm not sure what the intent is, what they plan on doing. I just, like I said, the reason for the rezoning is one less thing that my dad had to do. My brother basically worked really hard to help us provide something for the future, and that's what it is. I'm just trying, like I said, do a couple of things before, so he doesn't have to worry about it anymore.
Swamp that you're talking about, is that the area that you're talking about?
If you look at the, the area that's up to Greenwich, there's, right there at the, the fence line where the Greenwich is, is the house, there is holy water there all the time. And that lot tends to stay overgrown for most of the time. Even when Carrier was there, they never did anything with it. We were the ones that would maintain against the fence line, try to keep some of the overgrowing, which, you know, was just a big part of what we, that's always on.
Any other questions for Mr. Flores? All right. Thank you, sir.
Got a question for Kyle.
Kyle?
Kyle, on Z5, Mr. Flores said that he wanted to replat it. Would he have to have the zoning change to get it replatted? Or can he replat it, leave it M2 and still have the exemption if he splits it into two lots?
The, well, the issue with that is the, the minimum lot size for M2 zoning is like 15,000 square feet. And R1D was because the minimum is 3,000 square feet. So that, that was the, the purpose of the change or the rezoning. If, if they, if they couldn't be the minimum lot size under the current zoning, then that could be permissible. But, yeah. So no, they couldn't do that.
All right. Next card is, I'm not going to say this right. German Herman Flores? Could you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, my name is German Flores. I was really here only for C6. My brother showed up for C5. I was hoping there was going to be split differently, in two different phases. But like my brother stated, the only reason that the land across the street, the two houses, was so it could be, you know, my dad could leave it in order. The reason for the swamp is when Carrier came in there and did the parking lot. They pushed dirt and they left a lower end right there. That's besides the fact. So, I mean, I think there's not much for me to say other than, you know, just trying to get stuff in order before my dad passes away. Now, do I have to speak on mine on the C6 now? Or should we vote on C5 first and then come back for C6?
We're discussing them together, but we'll vote on them separately.
Okay. So C6, like you heard, the other two were given to each brother. So I am with my father currently on the big house across the street to the left of the, of my property, because I became basically his caregiver. I wanted to build a house. The, my land was an actual single homeland at one point in time when I was seven years old, three years old, and I can remember the lady. The lady wanted us to own the house. Kids had different plans. Sold it and house ended up burning down. The lady that bought it after I, before me, ended up rezoning it for mobile homes. I didn't know nothing about this kind of meetings, any of that kind of stuff, or that you could contest against it. I just saw a sign. So I bought this land back in like 2013, 14, when I started selling cars. And I was going to build my house, but I kept on wanting to wait because I wanted to pay for it cash and I didn't owe nobody money. So I went ahead and saved. Again, I waited too long. I wish I would have started back in 16 or whatever. You know, but that's besides the fact. So that property has never had a mobile home there. It had always had a house that burnt down. So the reason that I went and headed and bought there was because I wanted to be next to my father, since he's elderly. And my uncle had always lived with us. Now he moved over to Leo's now, which is right across the street. So that's why I want to build there, because I'm 35 years old. That's my land. That's where I was born. And like Leo said, my dad has always tried to help us to be a little bit better. And it's already zoned for a mobile home. So I could rent a mobile home there and I could put my family in there. But I think I've worked hard enough that I think my family deserves an actual house. I can afford it, so why can I not just build in my house? I didn't think that I had to resell. I thought, maybe I know a zone that's a mobile home. So you build a house. Who cares? You're bringing the value of the, of the area. So I didn't think you had to resell. So that's when I met Kyle and I was like, hey Kyle, I want to ask for my first permit to start building the house. And he's like, I'm like, don't I have to check the zoning or something like that? And that's when he addressed to me that it was set for modular homes, for mobile homes and stuff like that. And it, I did that back in April, so I've been waiting this whole time to start. I've got windows, I've got material already waiting for me to start building this house. So, and I have heard something, you, you did have a concern about the, like, the health of the people around there. I'm pretty healthy. I lived next to Carrier my whole life. And I did hear about lawyers coming and talking about something about the water or something like that. I really don't know nothing about that. But I think I'm pretty healthy and I've lived all my life there.
I know lots of people who actually have had cancer and died from, and lived in that area and were involved in loss.
Yeah, because I thought about going and checking on that, and then I was like, uh-uh. I never had anything handed to me, so I know I have to, instead of coming over here and wasting time. wasting time, I like to work, and that's why I never looked into that lawsuit, whatever.
Any other questions for Mr. Flores? All right, thank you for your time. Next, we've got Frank Cravelo. Okay. If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
I'm Heather Niski. I'm a representative of Phoenix Tyler LLC, as well as Phoenix Tyler II LLC. We are the suprouting property owners to the parcels that are in question. We're here today because we're objecting to both the Z5 and the Z6 zoning, rezoning applications. And just to kind of say here, a little bit of a backstory on this, we found out about the Flores's applications. It was actually the day before, their applications went before planning and zoning. We found out through our broker down here that this was going on. So, we did file a written objection, but we did not have the opportunity to appear at that hearing to voice our concern. The letter that, we did receive a letter from the city, it came after the hearing already had occurred. With that said, our written objection is based on the fact of what the historical zoning has been in that area. Basically, it's been M2. We're currently operating, we have a tenant in that building, in the old Carrier building, we have train in there. And so, we have plans to continue to expand into that area, and that's the reason why we're here today, is we're concerned about that. As you can see, we've been working on, and this map here shows, basically, in the last eighteen months, Phoenix has been working on trying to acquire more property in the area so that we can do a potential build out for train. As you can see, we've, the main, I can kind of show you on this here. This is the main plant over here. This is our original acquisition that we bought about two years ago. We've continued to add on properties. So, everything that you see here that is in this bronze yellow color is now owned by Phoenix. Within the last eighteen months, we've spent one million six hundred and fifty-three, I'm sorry, one million six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in acquisitions in this area. And that, we've acquired roughly about twenty-four additional acres to what we had to the original, and that puts us at roughly, we're paying, you know, sixty-eight thousand per acre in that area. With that said, you know, we have made attempts to talk to the Flores in regards to trying to buy out the parcels that they have. And I, we can actually, Jo Dobbs is here, our broker, she's here today, she can kind of discuss that a little bit further for you guys. But, you know, as I said, we've tried within the last year, we haven't really gotten anywhere, we have gotten no response. So, again, I mean, we're just trying to be good neighbors, we're, you know, trying to work with the people in the community. And if you can see here from the next map, this is the zoning map of the area. This, you can see, is the brighter purple color here is all M2. This is actually, when we're talking about the area here, this is where the main, the main plant is right here, and this is some of the land that we acquired. Right here, right above kind of where I have a pointer, that is the, the Z5 application, and this is the Z6 application. So, you can see, based on this map, I mean, this is obviously a very industrial area, and it was set up to be an industrial area. It's, M2 is, if you guys are sure, fully aware, I mean, that's, you know, usually for heavy industry. This rezoning would result in basically an island of residential right in this area over here. You know, and our feeling is, is that, you know, that these properties were never in compliance, you know, and were not in compliance with the code to begin with. I mean, you have, you know, there's residents, the Flores have a residence on this property here, where the, where the yellow arrow is, this is, this is the Z5 property right here. This, this property obviously is zone M2, there's a residence on it, it's legally performed, but obviously at some point in time, yeah, it was built there. And then the one where the green arrow is, this is zoned M2 as well, and there's a residence on it. You know, so our position that, you know, it just doesn't, wouldn't make sense to add a residential, basically, a residential island in the middle of this industrial area. As far as, you know, Phoenix is looking to keep the industrial development where it belongs, which is in that M2 district. And, you know, we feel like granting the application would create that, you know, residential island, that just doesn't seem to make sense. I mean, we fully intend to develop this area as industrial. So, basically, what you're going to have, you know, within the next thirty days, some of this right now is green space, but within the next thirty days, we're planning on clear cutting all of this. So, it's going to, you know, you're going to have that little residence there, and you're going to have all industrial around it. So, it just doesn't seem like it makes sense. And as far as long term goes, part of the, trying to keep train here in town is the fact that they want more space. So, what we're hoping to do is, we're hoping to be able to provide a build out to them to keep train all in one location. And with that said, that would require us, you know, to continue to acquire properties in that area, and, you know, to make space for them to be able to put in an additional building. So, one of the potential plans here, this was a potential possible of build out plan that we had put together to keep train in the area. And with this, you're talking, and, you know, from Phoenix's perspective, it would be, and we're from three hundred million to five hundred million in an additional investment for that build out. And you're talking potentially with construction, up to five hundred plus extra jobs. So... Oh, I'm sorry, thirty to fifty million.
Mr. Mayor, I do-
Tell us how many acres that you already own?
Yeah, I can. We have currently, including the main plant- I'm going to go back here. We have sixty-one point nine eight acres. So, just about sixty-two.
Go ahead, Bob.
Mr. Mayor, I've got a comment to make, but then also a question. You know, this council has a history, but also a culture of protecting personal property rights. And it was fully vetted by planning and zoning, which we rely on as council, to make sure that when items come to us, all of these questions have been answered, and that the item's been fully vetted. My question for you is, sometimes money just is not the, it's not the bait to get somebody to buy it. One of the most painful things that I know that I've ever done is having to go out and look for property and buy a home, and so on. And so, that's sometimes can be a very painful, stressful ordeal. Has there been any other offer, other than monetary, to outright purchase the property, like maybe a property swap or something like that, to be considered?
Not to this point, there hasn't, but we haven't received much dialogue from the Flores family. So, like I said, we had put out, we had put out offers, we have, you know, a broker here that, you know, has tried to work with them, but we haven't really, you know, had much dialogue as far as trying to figure out if that, if that even would be a reservation.
Well, I want to temper my comments, too. Train, Carrier, is, is the major production plant in my district, and never let it be said that I am not grateful for the investment that you've recently made in that plant off True Highway. And that's, but anyhow, that's why I led up to the comments that I just made about the offer.
All right, any other, any other questions for Ms. Niski before we move to Ms. Dobbs? Okay.
I was just going to say-
Can you state your name and address for the record?
I'm Jo Dobbs, General Real Estate. I've been working on with Phoenix now about a year and a half. One of the very first calls I made was to Mr. Flores, and I called him about a year and a half ago, at least. And the first thing I, I told him what we were doing and what I'd like to talk to him about, and I did it in Spanish, and he evidently understood, because he started yelling at me and hung up on me. And so, at that point, I incorporated Magno Mara, who is a Hispanic agent, to communicate with the Flores's. And he has probably made at least ten tries to get them to move, to say, yeah. And we have presented an offer, we presented an offer on the vacant acre and a half, almost double of what its assessed value is, and have not gotten a response to that. So, we've not been able to make any headway in about a year and a half, and we have been extremely diligent in pursuing them.
Any questions for Ms. Dobbs? Mr. Flores, did you want to come back up?
Yes, sir.
Come on up.
Okay, she said she reached out a year ago to us. She probably got ahold of my uncle, which he don't understand English. But as far as me being in contact with him, again, I want to stay there because of my father. The last offer I got from them, when they first offered me, I can't speak for my father. So, I can't tell you, hey, I'll sell you my father's properties. I can't. So, the last thing I told Magno was, the only thing that I can sell you, and I can tell you yes, is my acre and a half. That's the only one that I can speak on, by myself, or with my wife.
That's Z6?
That's Z6, yes, sir. I got offered eighteen thousand dollars. I can't replace an acre and a half for eighteen thousand dollars. I can pay for utilities, or something else that I said limits, probably for eighteen thousand dollars. That's all I can say.
Okay.
So, Ms. Jo, did you say that you spoke in Spanish?
Jo, you need to come back up to the microphone.
Yes, I did. And he, and he understood what I was saying, because it upset him, that I wanted to make an offer and purchase his land. And so, he said something, which I'm not sure what it was, but it was very loud, and then just kind of-
Okay, okay.
He's the only one that has a laptop. He doesn't know how to use the phone.
Okay. Frank, you want to come up? Just name an address for the record.
Yes. Frank Cravelo, founder and chairman of Phoenix Investors, property owner. We're located in Milwaukee, Wisconsin. We today own real estate in twenty-nine states. We own just under fifty-five million square feet. We are the national experts in taking former single tenant plants like this Carrier plant, and renovating them in a first-class manner, and repopulating them with high-quality companies. We bought this building about two years ago, without any public assistance, from the state, from the city. We've already spent several million dollars beyond the acquisition. And that money was done to ensure that train would continue to stay in space as their distribution center. We have a national relationship with train, and at some point, about a year and a half ago, we started talking, and they mentioned that they could potentially use significantly more space there, and it would be great if we could put it on a single campus. The problem there is that there's many different property owners, and it's complicated. This is an easy-to-give fact. I think that you purchased on a different site already.
Seven.
Seven. So, Jo, who's done a great job, has worked with, you know, local owners over the last year and a half and arranged this. And before we even went to that point, we had Jo look in the area to see if there was a suitable alternative, let's just say one large or hundred-acre site where we could build a million square feet. And we couldn't find it. It's tough, you know, there's not much industrial land available locally. And frankly, we started to even look outside of Tyler to fill the need. Anyway, the process started. We have worked with everyone in absolute good faith, and I can tell you that I am extremely sensitive to how your family feels about this. I'm a first-generation American as well. And, you know, my father, you know, built a home that I could resell and build a new one. All right, so I get it, you know. There's a lot of sentimental attraction to it. But the, but the point is, that was based on emotion. And at the end of the day, if they would engage with us, I am telling you, we'll pay them a significant premium to what anyone in this council would ever believe those properties are worth. But it takes two to tank, and if they're not willing to engage with us, I can't force them to sell their property. So, in good faith, we've already acquired, as Heather indicated, many acres. If I can show you the concepts, these are several different concepts that would involve as much as additional buildings of seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet. It would create something on the order of magnitude of upwards of five hundred jobs, between construction and the eventual operation. And the investment would be, depending on the ultimate size of the buildings, between thirty and fifty million dollars. Again, we haven't asked for any public assistance, any help. That's a lot of investment. And since, again, I don't speak for train, we are a landlord for train. Ultimately, it will have to make its own decision. But if I can't make this work, I can tell you that we acquired, I'm sure you're all familiar with the former Schlitz-Destros plant in Long, many of you may have had family members that worked there. We acquired that property about eighteen months ago. We've already substantially renovated most of the interior, and if you recall, the big silos, if you drive by today, you see they're tumbling down. We're creating a larger pathway there. And frankly, if things don't work here, we intend to, you know, propose this to train. Getting back to our property, if train were to leave, we will lease it to other industrial-type users. And again, if the Flores were family members of mine, I would say to them, why do you want to build a beautiful, single-family home next to industrial buildings that have sound, noise, trucks, and all the traffic? And I was on the site, I walked it entirely yesterday. It's beautiful right now, but I can tell you, we have signed a contract, the work is starting next month, and a hundred percent of all the land we own will be stripped. So, they will be looking through to the highway out their back door very soon, and I can't imagine they're going to want that. I wouldn't want that. And so, at the end of the day, we remain hopeful that cooler minds will prevail, that we can come to some sort of agreement with them, buy their land, and ultimately, use this land as the city currently has a plan, which is industrial.
So, Mrs. Frank, this actually is, I have to, so you said a couple of things that are kind of troubling to me, but what I heard you say is that next month, once you get started, you're going to have all these five-toners, and eighteen-wheelers, and all of those coming in, a lot of, lot of construction tractor coming in. But then I also heard you say, there's a probability that it will lose the train?
Well, no, I want to be clear, okay. Train maintains its warehouse at this location. It's interested in expanding its warehouse footprint. If we're not able to satisfy its needs here, it'll have to look at another location. I don't control train, though ultimately, I'm a service provider to train. But ultimately, what Phoenix will propose to them is, we own a building not far away in Longview. They've already looked at it, and it's just currently not big enough. But if it were larger, it certainly would get meaningful consideration. And this is not planned. I don't want to mischaracterize. This is strictly about finished goods currently, but they're talking about maintaining some raw materials there as well.
Any other questions for Mr. Cravelo?
Well, I do, and I'm grateful for you revealing the fact that you do have an alternate site for the facility. Thank you very much for that. However, if council happened to table this to allow a little more time for negotiations, good faith negotiations to take place, is that something that you would be considerate of?
Yes, absolutely.
Kyle, let me ask you, we always talk about spot zoning, but it's always kind of in a different environment. We've never had residential moving into an industrial area. Would you consider this spot zoning, if this was approved?
Yeah, so spot zoning would be something that, you know, having a use that is not, not compatible, or not kind of consistent with the plan of the area. And I think typically that's going to be determined by, you know, a legal proceeding, but it could be considered to be spot zoning, yeah, to have, have one, or treat one property different than the others, which would be to treat these- than the others, which would be to treat these properties different than the surrounding properties, which would be industrial activity. And so, yeah, sometimes it works the other way. That's not common, but in this case, you know, it's kind of the reason that we have zoning is that we, you know, we have, you know, kind of historical lessons is that, you know, not have residential uses so close to heavy industrial activity. So it would, I would say, you know, this would be kind of going the opposite way on that, you know, which would be allowing these... And one thing, I mentioned it before, is that the existing use of the property can't continue. And so that this approval of the zone change would not result in moving any families out or anything like that. It would just allow, it would not allow any future construction or expansion of that use.
Kyle, you said approval, you mean rejection?
Disapproval, yeah, rejection.
You know, what I think about is, when we talked about the zoning change at Truvine's, and they were wanting to build retail on the front, on the first floor, and residential on the second floor, and that item was denied because it was next to the concrete plant that operated 24 hours a day and with lighting and the same type of industry that Mr. Cravelo is talking about. So it seems like a similar situation to that. Is that similar?
Yes, yeah, so actually, I do not intend to have the criteria up here, but, you know, one of them is that the change is compatible with the present zoning of nearby property. So that's ID there, is that. And so you've mentioned a previous example of where, you know, it was identified that there was some incompatibility between residential and the industrial activity. You know, they have different hours of operation. They cause different noise, debris, or, you know, dust and things like that, that generally, you know, the areas designated for industrial activity are reducing, you know, within the city. And so there are some areas where you want to preserve that for that industry. And so this may be one of those areas as well, similar to the Truvine or the Earl Campbell Parkway property.
Okay. Any other questions for Kyle or for any of these speakers before we move on? Thank you all.
Mr. Mayor, would you entertain what Councilman Westbrook had to say in regards to tabling the votes?
If Mr. Westbrook would like to put that into a motion, that would be...
Thank you. I'd make a motion that we table it for 30 days. Oh, Z5 and Z6.
Okay, we've got a motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller, to table Z5 for 30 days.
And Z6.
All those in favor, say aye.
I'm sorry.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I'd make a motion now to table Z6 for 30 days, all seats.
Got a motion by Westbrook, a second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for being here. Either we'll see you in 30 days or we'll see a representative or someone, but would love for somebody to be present when we continue this. So, thank you all. Z7.
Thank you, Sergeant. Thank you, Sergeant.
This is a zone change request from multifamily and general commercial to R1D, single-family residential attached and detached. This is, again, north of here on Border Avenue and as well as Liberty Avenue. The applicant is requesting to rezonate these properties or downzone these properties to residential to allow for single-family development. The generally, the area is developed with single-family homes, as you can see here. So the applicant plans to combine these lots with the property to the west, and I believe something by then that have these two homes there. Of the notices that were sent out, there were return in favor or opposition to the request, and the plan that commissioned by four zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Go ahead.
Second. Got a motion by McKeller, split decision between McGee and Wynn. We're going to go with McGee. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Z8.
This next item is a zone change from RPO to restricted professional office district to AR, adaptive reuse district. And this is to allow for the continuation of, or bring into conformance the existing single-family home on the property. The properties to the west and east are zone RPO and are generally developed with a single-family home and a vacant lot up to the east. To the north is commercial property, and then to the south is residential property. This request would amend the future land use guide to office. The AR district would allow for the existing single-family home to be in conformance with the code, and also would allow for flexibility for future office or light retail uses on the property. This area was zoned, you know, on the East Front Street, zoned to RPO to allow, or to kind of plan for future office development or commercial activity along this area. This is done back in the 80s. As you can see here, this block here is still used for single-family homes, and this property is as well. They are looking to sell the property, and the financing or the lender requires that it be able to be rebuilt, I guess, and so that's why the AR zoning will allow for that, as well as keep kind of the future growth plan for, you know, if the area does convert to more of a non-residential character. And so of the notices that were sent out, one was return in favor and zero in opposition. And the plan that commissioned by four zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions for Kyle?
Move to approve Z8.
Second. Motion by Wynn, second by Curtis. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Z9.
This is a request for the closure of portions of Prestwick Drive, Travis Street, and Woodley Street. This is located in the Midtown District. The applicant is requesting the closure of these rights-of-way to incorporate them into the adjacent properties for future development. These, this right-of-way is within the, within a tributary for the Black Fork Creek. As you can see here, it's planted a long time ago or dedicated a long time ago, but the streets were never constructed because of the issues with the land. And so the applicant plans to, you know, utilize these rights-of-way into their, into the adjacent properties that they own. And we, of the notices that were sent out, we did receive three in opposition. Those are, the ones that did have, you know, have a reason for their opposition, it was more focused towards the future use of the property, if the applicant's going to rezone the property for something different. The applicant does plan to intend to rezone the property for future use or a different use. But this time, the request is looking at the closing of the rights-of-way and not future zoning of the property. So of the notices, like I mentioned, three in opposition. The plan that commissioned by four zero vote recommended approval.
Any questions or comments for Kyle?
Move to approve Z9.
Motion by Wynn, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. C10.
All right, this is a request for a zone change from R1B, single-family residential, to R2, two-family residential district. This is on West Fifth Street, just south of Glenwood Boulevard. You can see here, it's located within that block there. The adjacent properties to the east, west, and south are zoned for single-family, R1B, and are currently developed as such with single-family homes. To the north is zone P2R, planning a residential, and is developed with some townhomes, more recent. Currently also being developed with townhomes. The future land use guide identifies this as a single-family, medium-low density. For this to be approved, would amend the future land use guide to single-family and single-family attached to allow for the duplex. You can see here, the property in question is currently a vacant lot. It looks like the applicant does own the property to the east, on the right side there. They may have to adjust the property line for that as well. And they do, they plan to develop a duplex on the property. You can see here that most of those properties, if they're developed, they are single-family homes. The, of the notices that were sent out, zero were return in favor or in opposition. The plan that commissioned reviewed this request at their meeting in May, and recommended denial by a five to zero vote.
Say it again.
They recommended denial, or they denied the request. This is an appeal of their denial. And they recommended, or they denied the request largely because they would introduce a duplex into the middle of the block where it's currently developed with single-family homes, so it would not be in keeping with the character of that existing neighborhood. And they did mention that there was, didn't appear to be any non-conforming or any other structures utilized for two-family as well. So it's not, none of the properties are zoned or developed with similar, you know, type of, you know, density of a duplex. And so the applicant, or the plan that commissioned denied the vote, or denied the request by a five-zero vote, and the applicant is appealing that decision.
Any questions for Kyle before we move on to the applicant? All right, we got Carlos Maya.
Yes, sir.
You come on up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is Juan Carlos Maya, and I do own the lot, also the house to the east. The reason I'm here is because I don't agree with the decision that was made. As y'all can see in the picture, it's not there anymore, but on the very back of the lot, I mean, the whole block there is multi-family unit there. And also, on the other side of Greenwood, the whole area is R2, which there's a lot of duplexes there. On the south side, if you also can see two there, and I just don't see one was, you know, single out. And then I had the lots surveyed, and it is big enough, it measures approximately 8,000 square feet. And I do love to build a duplex there, not only be up to code, but it'll be something very nice, something pleasurable, where somebody will be happy to live in. And I do believe that it will bring the value of the properties around it, because it's going to be something very nice. And I do ask you to please reconsider the decision and grant me the salary.
So are there any duplexes up and down the street? Are they all single-family homes?
Not on the same street, but there is on both sides, I mean, on north side and east side also.
Y'all have any questions for Mr. Maya?
I do also own some other property, and I do keep it in mind. This is what made my very first one. I own a few other houses and one duplex. And I just, you know, asking for a chance to continue my dream and building rental properties.
All right, thank you. What y'all think? Whose district is this in?
That's two.
That's two.
That's your district.
You know, I guess the thing that's weird to me is... I'll give you time to think about what you're going to say. Yeah, the thing that's, I realize P and Z denied it. But it's interesting to me that there's no red on the map. And when you reach out 200 feet in all directions, that would, that's a lot of, that's a lot of people that could oppose it if they didn't want it. And it comes back to, you know, if you don't want something in your neighborhood, you've got to speak up. And because sometimes silence means I'm okay with it. But that's just, that's just me, and I'm just one of seven.
That's a good point. And I applaud Mr. Maya's attitude about development, and I hope he does keep doing it. But I don't agree, if I lived on that street, I would want a duplex put in. That's how I feel.
It's in your district. What do you think?
Well, why y'all waiting? You know, my thing is, I mean, I never want to see anybody held back from doing better. And the fact that you live next door, I mean, I don't know what you're going to...
It's a rental property.
It's a rental property. So all of those are already rental properties, pretty much, probably? Or I guess we wouldn't know that. And that may be the reason why you didn't get a protest, because people who live there, they don't own the property. So maybe they, you know, maybe they didn't ever really think about the protest. But if it's already rental property is there...
They are.
And...
If you're, come back up here so y'all can have dialogue when you're on the mic.
If they're already, like me, I own a house on West Fifth Street. I'm not, I can't, I don't know how far this, apparently I didn't get a notice, so it's not close enough to me. But what I'm saying is, I think most of that area is probably rental, rental property. So I don't see an issue, you know? If it's big enough, and you're saying that the lot size is big enough for a duplex?
It's almost 8,000 square feet, yes, sir. And that is, it actually has 7,500. So it is more than enough.
Okay. It's big. Yeah, it is.
I live about two blocks from here, because I live right on the edge of the street.
See, that's why I saw four. That's why I saw four, and that's why I was looking and thinking, maybe this was...
I have seen a lot of the houses along Sixth Street going down the hill towards Sunnybrook being reclaimed for individuals and not rentals anymore. There are rentals on Fifth Street, I'm well aware of that. There are two or three houses close to Mr. Maya's house that are single-family, that are working through some problems with some non-complying houses that I'll get with you about, Mr. McGee.
Yeah.
That have problems with renters.
Okay.
So there is, there are rental properties up and down Fifth and Sixth, but there are single-family homeowners that have bought these that are now experiencing some problems. Not that any of the problems with Mr. Maya's house, but others in, on Fifth Street and Sixth.
Okay.
Do you have a question?
Yes, sir.
Well, are these going to be rental properties for you?
Yes, they would be rental properties. And I do like to say that I have application that tenants might should fill out first. I'll do a background check on them. I don't bring anybody that is, you know, running from the law on the neighborhood. Although, there has to be a body citizen, in other words. I don't run into anybody that's looking for a house.
Okay. Well, I'm going to make a motion to approve, because like I said, I don't see an issue with it, because they're already, rental properties already in the area and around. So I move to approve Z10.
All right, I've got a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second with you.
I got a motion by McGee, a second by McKeller. Any further discussion? I think we're going to have a split vote, so...
We might, I don't know.
I don't know. So all those in favor of denying or approving Z10, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
I would need a roll call decision.
Senator, I was thinking about doing a roll call. Can you, can you do that, Cassandra?
Casper, the Haines?
Opposed.
Casper, the Wynn?
Opposed.
Casper, McGee?
Aye.
Casper, the Westbrook?
Opposed.
Casper, Curtis?
Opposed.
Casper, McKeller?
Aye.
Very more?
What's that tally?
Four.
Four to three?
Three, four.
Motion fails, sorry.
Sorry.
Wish you the best. You can still build a house on there, though. Don't give up.
Yes.
All right. All right. Is this an exciting presentation, Prentice? I feel my ADD starting to kick in.
I'm thinking it's gonna require that, but I'll make that. Good morning, Mayor, good morning, Council, City Manager. My name is Prentice Butler, I'm the Housing Manager for the Neighborhood Service Department. I'm before you today to request approval for the 2022-2023 Housing Choice Voucher and Family Self-Sufficiency Annual Plans. The United States Department of Housing and Urban Development's Housing Choice Voucher Program is a federally funded program designed to assist very low-income families, the elderly and disabled members of the community to afford decent safety and enter housing in the private market. Each agency that receives federal funds are required to complete annual administrative plan reviews. And so this particular process begins with, first of all, understanding what the administrative plan is, which is really just a plan to line out how the agency is going to administer the program for the upcoming year. The first part of the process is to actually review the plan, so Neighborhood Service and Staff gets together, review the plans to look and see what changes we need to make, what improvements we need to make to the program for the upcoming year. And the second part of the process is to actually meet with the Residential Voucher Board, which is comprised of participants and agency personnel. And this allows the participants to also provide input into what they would like to see in the upcoming program year, and to also seek ideas, input onto what they would like to see going into the next coming year. The next part of that is to actually have a public comment period, which is required by HUD, a 45-day comment period is required. It began March 25th, and it lasted through May 10th, 2022. We also had two onsite public hearings. One, we have the morning of April 21st, 2022, at Workforce Solutions in Texas, and then we have the second public hearing in the evening of April 22nd at the Glass Recreation Center. But we did not have any public comments during that comment period. The last and final stage is actually to receive approval of the agency's plan and to submit the plan and all the certifications to HUD by the end of July. Any questions?
Any questions?
Good explanation. I'd like to offer a motion to approve O1.
Got a motion by McKeller, second by McGee. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Great presentation.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. So as usual, they save the best for last, so I appreciate that. Try to keep it short for everybody. I love the airport, that's what I'm... What we have today is a request to authorize the City Manager to enter an agreement with Alliance Transportation Group to develop the inputs for what is called a travel demand model. So the Metropolitan Planning Organization does transportation planning for the entire greater Tyler metropolitan area. And one of the items that we do to try to do that transportation planning is we maintain a model that we do in conjunction with people who work at the Tech Stop District. So what we are doing is every five years, we do an update through the model where we update what's called the demographic inputs. Now that we have the information from the 2020 census, we use that to try to help model, try to see where the growth is going, and we use that to try to forecast where the new traffic is going to be generated based off of that. That's what we're looking at in a nutshell. This is going to be funded through the Metropolitan Planning Organization's grant, so it'll be 100% coming from these Metropolitan Planning Organization dollars. However, the City of Tyler serves as the fiscal agent for the MPO, which means that it pays the upfront cost and then receives the reimbursement from the state after the fact. But because that, we follow all of the policies of our fiscal agent, which means that any contract exceeding $50,000 comes to City Council for review and approval. So right now, again, that is what we're doing, and it is recommended that the City Council authorize the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Alliance Transportation Group to provide the demographic analysis and updates for the travel demand model and authorize the City Manager to execute the contract.
Any questions for Michael?
Can they transfer us from Tyler to the airport in Dallas? We need that.
Move to approve in one.
Second.
A motion by Curtis, second by McKeller. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. All right, next we got the consent agenda. We got one item.
Move to approve. They're sure that's consent agenda.
Got a motion by Westbrook, second by Wynn. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I gotta look quick. City Managers Report, and welcome back from vacation.
Thank you, sir. Glad to be back. I do have to say that it was much cooler in Alaska than it is here. And it's still, you can't beat Texas. Even though, I would biggest take my own mind that we actually had more people in Tyler than they had in the whole state.
So for today's City Manager Report, actually, just as one special item, we have a special retirement that we wanted to announce and bring forward. We have our second baby from our Infant's at Work program that has been able to spend her time up here, Cecilia Tudor, and her mother Teresa Tudor, there they are. Teresa works in the Water Service Center and had Cecilia, again, I guess what now is Cecilia? Let me say, how old is she now?
She's eight months.
Eight months. And so she was able to have her up here. And for the past seven and a half months, as far as Cecilia, a little Cecilia there, has been working for the city and being able to be here and be her first public servant's job, and so we are very proud of her and bringing her before you as the council, as her retirement is happening at the end of this month. And so with that, a short little video of her, the time that she has served. It's not the 115-year total that we had earlier this morning, but it's close.
So let me ask real quick, how many of your coworkers changed diapers?
Yeah.
We're very proud of this program, very proud of Cecilia, and of course, always proud of her mother, Teresa, for the work that she provides to our organization, and glad to be able to have her back up with us, you know, kind of early to be able to continue working at the Water Service Center, and they'll have Cecilia there, and hopefully, you know, Cecilia probably won't ever remember it, but maybe it wears off somewhere in her subconscious about what a great job it is to work for the City of Tyler, and may see her back in about 16 to 18 years.
Teresa, can you come up for a second? Tell us what you thought about the program, if you would.
It was really helpful, and it like gave me a bond with my job, and everyone got to see. I think it also like uplifted the service center a lot.
Well, good job, you did well.
After the meeting's over, if the Council wants to go take a picture with her, we have a plaque for her to give as part of the retirement ceremony, and so y'all can have an opportunity with your newest, but you have retiring employees.
Any other comments for the City Manager before we adjourn? I will say this, I think, Bob and Stuart, I think you both look great in your matching And I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Okay, we are adjourned.